For sure. Um, he will be.
Bye.
It'd be a super.
There'd be a couple on the right, their neighbors.
I heard it was still good, though. I'm a competitor. Oh, Mark. Is it not proper?
Yes.
Hi.
Just to the.
Like in case you're.
Signed into.
Like getting held up.
I knew Alan was gonna be out.
Then they have to say their name.
It looks like Mike and.
It's out.
Mike and.
Um, but I do know.
So they're calling in hopefully.
This button for some purpose.
That's true.
You don't have like.
And then I, I think she's, she's going.
Can you hear us?
I'm here.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, okay. If that's cool.
He will not be here.
Who else?
If we only have four.
We're at a quorum.
Okay.
We have somebody online?
Ethan.
Come on, go.
All right, Ethan.
Hello, there he is.
You made it.
Here I am.
All right, it is six thirty-three, um, five thirty-three, and I will call the meeting of nine seventeen, twenty-four of the Breckenridge Planning Commission to Order. Chris, can we get a?
Absolutely, bold call. Mr. Frechter, Mr. Giller, Mr. Lees.
Here.
Ms. Proper.
Here.
Mr. Gara.
Here.
Ms. Gort.
Here.
And Ms. Ambrose.
Okay, are there any changes to the agenda staff?
There are no changes.
Okay, as part of the certified local government, we are asked to take public comment on historical preservation issues in the community. With that, I'll open up the meeting to any public comment. If you're attending the meeting by phone, you can press star nine on your phone and then star six to unmute yourself.
No, I'm.
All right, looks like we don't have any comment. So we don't have anything on the consent calendar. I think our first item is, uh, a preliminary hearing. The Frith residence, new single-family home at one-ten South High Street, PL twenty-twenty-four dash oh-two-seven-four.
All right, everybody. Good evening, Chair and Commissioners. This is Sarah Crump, Planner Three for the record. Um, tonight before you, we have again the preliminary hearing for the Frith residence. Let me get my pen here so I can. Comments? All right. And so this is a proposal for a one-bed, one-bath, two-car garage, single-family residence on a split lot off of High Street. Um, we'll just jump down to the site plan quickly and take a look at the proposal. And we'll start with a summary of the site plan and, um, the proposal, and then we'll go into how it meets the development code and the standards from the handbook of the design, uh, guidelines, as well as the standards from the character area, and then we have some questions for the commission at the end. So this will be, um, a new home on this, again, it's a split lot access from High Street. There's an existing shared access easement that will be shared with Lot A to the south. Um. The property is somewhat constrained in size. Um, it is a, a flag lot with a diagonal, um, uh, separation between the Lot Seven A that's to the west. Um, and then there's an existing utility easement that follows the property line. Um, and it's about five feet in width for this diagonal, and it extends to ten feet in width along the north property boundary. This site is in the east side resident, east end residential character area. Um, and then, so we'll just start with talking about the allowed density for that area. Just as a history, this lot was split in nineteen eighty-five approximately. Um, so it's an existing vacant lot for, um, about the past thirty years. The land use district, um, of this lot is seventeen, um, which allows for, um, eleven units per acre. And so on this small lot of point zero-five-nine-five acres, um, and above a total density of one thousand forty-seven square feet is allowed. And the applicant is proposing, um, one thousand forty-six square feet of total density. The above-ground, uh, recommended units per acre is nine units per acre, which allows for eight hundred and fifty-seven square feet. And the applicant is proposing eight hundred and fifty-seven square feet of above-ground density. The development code allows for a five-hundred-square-foot bonus density for garage, um, in the historic district. And so this application is also taking advantage of that. So the total actual density is one thousand five hundred and forty-six square feet, which meets the development code. There's a small mechanical room in the rear of the proposed structure. It's not to be over five feet in head height, so it will not qualify as density in this area. We could talk more about that um, later when we get to drainage. Under Policy Six of the Development Code, the project is measuring twenty-one feet at the, um, midpoint of the front primary facade or the front gable, sorry. Um, and that is, uh, exactly on the mark of what's allowed in this land use district seventeen. Um, I do want to talk more about height in relation to the handbook, uh, standards in just a few moments, okay? Regarding placement of structures. Oh. Because this is a flag lot, um, all the setbacks are treated as side setbacks. So, um, each setback is five feet, and that's what's required. They're exceeding the five-foot setback in every instance. And they've actually been, um, talking already with the utility company and, um, have received sort of advanced notice, and we'll get this in writing, that the, um, utility company Excel is okay with the structure, um, encroaching into this north utility easement by one and a half feet. And again, they're meeting the required setbacks of five feet. The application for a single-family home outside the parking district requires two, uh, spaces. So providing those two spaces in the garage. And they also get a positive one point for the shared driveway under Policy eighteen R. For landscaping, it's quite faint on the drawing, but the applicant is proposing, um, additional aspen trees for screening on the north and south side. We've requested they not do any additional disturbance to the rear of the lot, which is sloping up quickly, and there's very little room. Um, because of the steep slope on the side, they may, um, end up limiting the number of, uh, aspens that are proposed. Um, but it, um, could be something that's a fit test at the final, and they're not requesting any positive points for landscaping. That's just the proposed amount at this time. Moving on to the Handbook of Design Standards and the requirements. Um, the first few policies in the handbook talk about, um, general requirements for all projects in the historic and conservation districts. Um, and mo-, uh, discuss the settlement patterns that were typical of historic Breckenridge. This project is on a rear lot that's sort of oddly shaped, but it is still, um, meeting the settlement patterns that are described in the handbook by placing the, um, the structure squarely on the lot and it's facing the main right-of-way High Street, so it follows Policies, um, Four and Five. The same with all of the general policies at the beginning of Chapter One of the, or Chapter Three of the handbook. But moving on to policies regarding new construction. Um, the project was reviewed against Policy Eighty. And, uh, that talks about the scale of the building and how it should be designed to be, um, within the historic scale that was seen, um, in Breckenridge. Um, this is particular somewhat to the density and where it's typically measured with floor area scale is, um, under this policy. So historically, the buildings range from five hundred to twenty-three hundred square feet. That's the average range, um, is fifteen hundred square feet for the remaining historic structures. And this one is proposed at one thousand five hundred forty-six square feet total. Um, so it is within that average range of structure size. Um. Another, uh, policy that regards scale and massing, which is Policy Eighty-Six, we'll talk about here shortly. And again, the proposed gable height of this, uh, the tallest gable, um, in the front and on the rear is a twenty-three, or sorry, on the south side, is a twenty-three feet in height, and that's compliant with Priority Design Standard Eighty-One. Design Standard Eighty-Four, um, discusses how the building heights should, uh, reflect the existing and natural land contours. Um, you saw in the report diagram, uh, five-point-two-point-six from the handbook that shows the structure inset into the hillside with most of the, a lot of the massing being constructed underground. Uh, this same, uh, this proposal follows that recommendation by having, uh, much, a lot of the mass underground and the floor area underground. So staff has no concerns that the, uh, project is following Design Standard Eighty-Four. Moving on to Eighty-Six, um, this is another policy that talks about scale in the residential, um, neighborhood. Um, but it sort of is a different idea than density. It's talking about, um, the massing and the form of the structure and whether that is compatible with structures that were seen historically. Um, so we know that this structure will be kind of between two existing homes, uh, which were constructed, I believe, in the mid-eighties and may not be in compliance with the handbook. They're a little bit larger. This overall floor area of this project is smaller, but, um, staff believes that because it's a, the main living level and the ceilings are all vaulted, there's a lot of additional massing in this, um, second-floor roof form um, that possibly should be reduced, um, in order to be more compliant with the handbook. Um, these, especially this rear, uh, gable here. Uh, bringing this roof height overall down and reducing some of that interior space that's, um, open to the main living floor would, again, bring the overall structure size into a more compatible, um, feeling and mass with, um, historic structures which are across the street and on this block. And so we are asking the commission if you, um, believe whether, if, whether you know, you believe that as presented, the, uh, project fails Priority Design Standard Eighty-Six. Let me get rid of some of my marks here so we can look at a clean slate. Um, the next policies talk about building width. Um, so that's eighty-eight and one-twenty-four, um, in the standards. And we know that, um, the, as measured, this front primary facade, which is this portion here, or rather, this portion here is twenty-two feet across and it sets forward on the structure. So that's the portion that we would measure. Um, this is within the historic, um, average, which was between sixteen and forty-four feet. So we don't have any concerns with the building width. The, this, um, the majority of the width is set back on the structure. And it's, um, worth noting that all of the structure will be concealed behind the existing residence that's already on Lot Seven A. Moving on to building materials. Um, the project is proposing, uh, standing seam metal roof, four-inch vertical lap siding, uh, both, uh, vertical and horizontal lap siding, rather. Uh, a stone veneer on the base in some areas, but leaving the, um, front front door area and the rear without the stone base. Um, and then, uh, traditional wood deck railing. Um. The handbook has a few standards that discuss what's required for, um, architectural details, um, including ninety, one-twenty-five, and one-twenty-six. Um, one-twenty-six in the character area states that, um, it is, uh, acceptable to have stone accents on residential structures, but it shouldn't be the main material. And so they've met that requirement here. Staff does request a little more information on the lap siding speci- specifications prior to, um, the next hearing, but generally, uh, we can see that these, um, proposed materials are compatible with, again, one ninety, one-twenty-five, and one-twenty-six. This says used materials that appear to be the same size and, um, uh, of those used historically. We'll note for the next, um, hearing whether the seam height of the metal roof, as well as the material of the chimney cap, and, um, uh, any other, uh, specifications that need to be explicitly called out before the next hearing. But again, generally compatible with the architectural materials section of the handbook. Moving on to, um, Standard One Twenty-One. It says roof forms that reflect the angle, scale, and proportion of historic buildings are required. Um, and it also states, note that many gable roofs were accented with dormers. These were used in limited numbers on an individual building. Um, looking at the overall size of the structure, staff believes that the number of dormers proposed, which is four, and their size may be too large and too, uh, extensive for this size of a structure. And so we're asking the commission to weigh on, weigh in on that question as well. Um, again, if the overall roof height is decreased and the mid-roof massing were decreased, um, this might, uh, perhaps the structure doesn't accommodate these four large dorm- dormers in that case. Under, uh, Priority Policy One Twenty-Two, um, this is for, specific to the character area, but it regards, um, primary facades and that recommends that they should be, um, or rather requires that they be one or one and a half stories. There's much precedent in the historic district for structures built on the rear of a lot that they would have underground, um, main-level garage and then living area on top. We have, um, precedent for this type of structure on a rear lot previously in the historic district. So we're asking whether the commission believes that the design does comply with, uh, Design Standard One Twenty-Two. Because this is a rear lot, it's non-street-facing, and so having that, um, main level be concealed parking and then the living area on top that does appear to be a two-and-a-half-story facade, even though it meets the overall height limitation of twenty-three feet. Um, when you're looking at it visually, it reads as a two-and-a-half-story structure. But we're, want to confirm with you that you believe this is compatible with that standard for a project that's on a rear lot, um, non-street-facing. Design standards, um, ninety-one, ninety-two, and ninety-three, as well as one-thirty for the character area, talk about, um, the historic ornamentation and detail that was found, um, within the conservation and historic districts. Typically, um, very limited, uh, Victorian influence ornamentation, uh, that would serve a more functional purpose and wasn't necessarily overly ornamental. Um, for the details that we found, uh, they're proposing this, um, hand railing. It's fairly simple. Wooden, um, with just some inset details, and we are asking whether you believe that complies with ninety-one, ninety-two, ninety-three, and one-thirty. And then I want to, um, talk about the windows and the solid-to-void ratio on the primary facade. Um, there's two sets of French doors, half-light, called out here. Um, a rectangular bay that protrudes forward with a picture window, two double hungs on either side. Um, this leaves fairly limited, um, the void area in between windows. Uh, staff does not believe that this amount of glazing complies with Standards Ninety-Five and Ninety-Six. So we're asking for the commission's opinion on that. Um, staff does not have concerns about the other elevations and the solid-to-void ratio. Um, those are more typically what was seen historically for the size of windows and the solid-to-void ratio. Um, the rear facade that does have two additional sets of half-light French doors. Um, this is up against a tight slope. It's not visible from the street, um, and staff has fewer concerns about this elevation, uh, meeting the standard, but we will ask your opinion on that as well. Finally, um, under Design Standard One Twenty-Nine, um, it talks about the historic porches and how they were used to define the primary entrance to buildings. Again, we have a rear lot and structure where the, um, garage is inset on the main floor, um, and a deck built onto the structure on the second level. And, uh, we're asking the commission if this proposal meets that Standard One Twenty-Nine, um, regarding porches. Since it is, again, a rear lot, not street-facing. Um, I do need to touch on Policy Twenty-Seven. Um, so leaving the historic handbook and moving back to the Development Code, uh, Twenty-Seven regards drainage. Um, we have had several projects ongoing in the area that, um, uh, new construction as well as existing projects, uh, that the engineering department is aware of some drainage issues and perhaps a natural spring that's under, uh, near this area. The groundwater is very high. Um, so this project is proposing that mechanical room in the rear, uh, which doesn't add to density. They'll probably have a sump pump back there and be able to deal with that drainage, um, onsite. And, uh, the engineering department is working very closely with the applicant to make sure that that's not a problem for them as they go forward with building. But I just wanted to point it out in case that question came up, because it wasn't in the report. Um, so a summary of the project, um, right now, the preliminary point analysis, they are at plus-one for the, uh, shared parking driveway. Um, but staff is recommending, or, um, noting that they likely fail a few of the Priority Design Standards. So I'll just repeat what those are at this moment. Um, Design Standard Eighty-Six. So this is for the roof massing and the overall height above the second level. Staff thinks that should be reduced. Uh, Design Standard Ninety-Five and Ninety-Six regarding the windows and glazing on the front of the primaries, on the primary facade. Um, this should be reduced and the solid-to-void ratio increased in order to meet the historic standards. And then, um, Priority Design Standard One Twenty-One regarding the number of dormers proposed on the structure. Um. So with that, um, we do have questions one through eight listed for you in the packet. I'm happy to take questions that you might have about the design, and I know the applicant is here as well. And, um, you may ask questions of him, too. And then we will have a public comment period. Thank you.
Okay, I'm gonna ask for, um, commission questions, and Ethan, I'm gonna start with you.
We will have, um, questions for staff, and then you'll get an opportunity to make a presentation if you like. No, you're fine.
Ethan, do you have any questions for staff about the report?
I think you're muted, Ethan.
Ethan, do you have any questions for staff?
Not at this time. Thank you, Chair.
All right. Susan, do you have any questions?
Fine. Uh, thanks very much, Sarah. I appreciate your report. Um. My only question has to do, you know, given the shared driveway, um, how construction equipment is going to access?
Um. To be determined. They do have to present a construction management plan prior to the building permit application. Um, they'll probably include a right-of-way permit through the engineering department in order to, um, have some construction equipment staged on High Street, just in front of the house that's existing. Um, and then they'll be expected to. Um and then they'll be expected to have the majority of their materials back here um on the site. So it um on these tighter lots, it is a constraint, but um it might mean that construction is just um I don't want to say delayed, but um more strategically co- completed so that it they're managing their materials and everything um in a good order. If anybody has anything to add about, I'm not a construction expert, so. The applicant can certainly speak to that too.
Yeah, I I guess, you know, one of the things that I noted, um talking about EV chargers, there is an EV charger on the outside of the adjoining house that shares the driveway and I did see a car being charged there. Um and it seemed to me that that would have to be something worked out in order to um get construction equipment onto the site.
Certainly, they'll need to be good neighbors and work with their the homeowners next door.
Elaine.
I have questions. Um can you bring up the back of the house? So it's my understanding that there's a public access trail back there?
Oh, yes, yeah.
So.
You can't see it on their site plan, um but is, you know, this way from the from the lot.
So I guess my concern is that people walking by there will look at those huge French doors and.
Um I think the change of slope is great enough that it won't be like they would have to, you know, walk down the slope to see into the structure, but.
Look that high above it to me, but I guess I can't really tell where the house is gonna the height is gonna be there. So I guess that's one of my concern or questions is if you considered or looked into how the elevation goes up and what will be in the back there. And then on the front side, we have the bay window sticking out and no covered porch. And that bay window, that doesn't count as square footage because it's shorter than five feet. Is that right?
I think that's correct.
Okay. If they had windows on the sides and did like a double hung sash, made it look more like the historic houses. That would be appropriate. Your thoughts?
Yeah, that's a, that's a recommendation.
Okay.
It would reduce the overall amount of glazing by having a another um void or sol- solid area rather in between. Kind of like what's on um, are you thinking of two oh three South?
They're all over town, the like historic houses that have the roof that covers the bay window, might be something to look at. I think it's very iconic for Breck. And then it, so it were they, the code talks about, you know, the railing defining the primary entrance. I don't really see a primary entrance behind that railing or anything that looks to be even mimicking one.
So their primary entrance will be this door on the main level.
See, I would think of the you go up the stairs and go inside on the left.
This one?
Like if I was a guest and coming over, I wouldn't knock on that basement door.
Going up the stairs on the left or.
Primary door.
Yeah, I mean, I think there's, there's the primary from like architectural level and the primary from a functional level, like I I even think of my own house. Like where I have a front door that is probably of the three entrances is the least used of the doors. Um so I I think we still would consider the one down below. And this also is Sarah mentioned being behind a uh also a primary historic residence. We're kind of looking at it in a way of how we've treated other additions or separate structures, you know, that are behind uh historic property, particularly where there's a driveway access on one side or the other. And so some of the design elements, like if this was facing the street, it wouldn't be appropriate to have or fit like truly on the street to have a garage door there or that upper level deck. But if you look, you know, even on this block, that's a fairly common um type of structure for in a in addition. Like there's, there's probably like four or five that are of this style on Front Street. There's um the Collins Residence, which is under construction currently about four homes down that has a very similar uh kind of layout, so we're um.
Are you talking about like the brown structures that we kind of do for the garages in the back?
Structure in the back because this doesn't really truly have a street front. So we're we're kind of reviewing a lot of elements as we would for other structures that are behind the primary uh historic structure with the with the caveat that this is its own unique lot, like it would from a settlement pattern standpoint, if we just had another home that was kind of had a hundred percent um, you know, primary features. Like a a a big porch kind of behind another house, that actually would look probably from a settlement pattern standpoint, a little bit off, you know, as well. So we're trying to, we're we're kind of blending what we would expect for a standalone residence with some of the things that are typically associated with a a secondary structure on the site, if you will.
But it's not any of the colors of the secondary structures that we're having for the additions has a very different look. And that garage is gonna be really visible from the street.
But we have other.
Her today. Pass it around.
Yeah, I I think with how narrow the the driveway is and with it being offset behind the other structure, I would, I would beg to differ about its visibility from the street. It would probably be no more visible than what we typically see of um.
For a secondary structure.
Yeah, for a secondary structure, it has has a garage door in that that location.
That said, the the handbook is somewhat silent on second primary structures on a split lot. It doesn't really contemplate that, so it's kind of up to you to whether you, the commission agrees that it meets those standards where we've called out that um this probably wouldn't be appropriate for a house that's on the street frontage, but because it is behind um we're asking that you agree that it's um in line with the standard.
Okay.
I'll try and pull up some examples um that maybe we can look at that are kind of a similar design.
Yeah, I've I've some pictures here, passing around just some of the neighborhood. This first one is looking into the, well, the driveway is right here and this is looking back to where it will be. You guys can can see the driveway there. And then here's some of the historic ones. Anyway, if you guys just wanna look at these, there's only like one, two, three. This is the one directly next door, has a very big French porch, but it definitely has the entrance, but this one's right on the street.
And that home is not historic?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I saw it.
Okay.
I saw it today. Have you seen?
Yeah.
We've all seen the.
Okay, great. I think that's all I have. Yeah, thanks.
But there are even examples where we've had an addition you know, to a historic structure where it's it's physically separated in the back and you have really the same design features and you have lap siding. It's more typical that we've encouraged that uh for one, it's on the same property to have the darker stain, but they're uh three oh six South Ridge would be a a a prime example of something where it's sided actually the same as the historic primary structure and has a deck in front and the garage below and.
Have like the modern garage like this one.
It does, yeah. And I mean, you can see.
Should I pull up three oh six so that everybody can see?
Yeah, that might be.
So I guess we have to go on precedent since they got it. I just recommend you put a cuter garage on. Maybe it looks more historic. I think it could add a lot to it.
You're on Front Street.
Oh, sorry. Which one did you say?
Uh Red Street.
Yeah, so very similar construction history home in the front.
Yeah.
And with with a probably a, you know, there's a little bit of hill going up to Front Street, but probably not to the extent of the grade that current applicants are working with.
It's in the shadow there too, so it's hard to see it. There's definitely lots of garages on that street with the newer houses.
Yeah, and I mean, to your point, there are a lot of examples where there is the one that had, you know, a very similar dimension and shape where it has, you know, dark stain uh siding. There's several on Front Street. There's the one under construction right now.
Did you have anything else?
Nothing else. Thank you.
You mentioned the utility easement. You mentioned that it was uh Excel. Is it electric and gas easement? Do you know?
Um I don't know that it's been located uh or I I'm unsure at this moment, which it is.
Is it an easement or is it actually a utility crossing?
I I don't know that the utilities have been located at this time or but it is an easement for a ten-foot eas- utility easement.
Yeah, because sometimes there's easements that don't get used, so that's why.
Correct, and Excel has indicated that um they don't believe that they would ever need a ten-foot area there so that they're um most likely on board with the encroachment.
And you mentioned that it was a shared driveway with two. I think it's actually a shared driveway with three properties. So it'd be this one, the existing house to the right and the existing house that sits in front of this.
I don't think that um seven A has the right for that driveway. The these are, I shouldn't point out, this is also the current owner of seven A. Um so they would know, but I think it's just an access through their.
By the house that's on the right that has a gar- garage that's accessed there.
Correctly.
This proposed residence.
Yes, it is. It's an access across seven A, but they do not have a right to park there. Yeah.
But the applicant owns both pieces of property at this time.
Yes.
Well, I think that's all I had, so um you had mentioned that you would like to say something, so this is the time to do it. Podium and use the microphone so we get it on the record.
Thank you.
Uh don't worry, we won't hold that against you.
It should be green if it's on on the top.
Smarter than the microphone. Sounds better. All right.
There you got it.
Good evening, Commissioners and Chair Elise. Again, I apologize for uh not speaking right after staff. I was so excited because Sarah's uh staff report was so well worded and so complete. It's been a pleasure working with her. Uh my name is Dave Frith, uh project uh architect applicant homeowner uh with uh my beautiful wife, Aubin. Uh for a quick matter of background, I am a uh older high school pedigree, uh grew up here and uh spent more time skiing Breckenridge than high school and uh gap year at after school. Uh taught couple uh seasons of uh ski school at uh Peak Nine with some of you, if you guys have been around that long. Um and then ended up working with John Gunson, uh who many of you know, I'm sure. Uh so it's been a while since I've been to a planning commission. It was twenty-five years ago now. Um but really excited to be back. Uh we're in a funny season of life where we just dropped our uh second and last uh baby girl off at uh CU Boulder. Do I have three minutes before I start roaming? Am I?
Limited.
Okay, sorry. I just, I didn't see the clock starting to tick, but I'll be respectful of everybody's time tonight. So we we're in a uh three weeks into our empty nester season. We are uh, you know, bought bought the front house uh and the back lot from Cheryl Love. I don't know if you guys know Cheryl Love about twenty years ago, uh kind of a colorful Breckenridge character. So we had big ideas twenty years ago. Chris, I've probably known for fifteen years uh as an architect. We've designed uh multiple homes that have never formally been submitted. We we did a a study where we looked at a single family development um that had a connector with the grade change. We've looked at, you know, remodeling the first house, combining the lots and just doing something in the front. But the the season of life that we're in, um and because of that ten-foot grade change and the hill that I'll circle back to as soon as I'm done talking about the background here. But um we feel like a small, single-family home uh actually meets uh or or two homes uh that basically will uh be shared by a family. Uh our family meets our current family makeup. We uh fifteen years ago had wild ideas and no money. Uh we still have no money with two kids in college, uh but have a ton of time now that we're empty nesters. So we're processing the plans in hopes of uh getting some kids out of college and someday uh building this home for ourselves. Um there was a question about the uh lots. We do own the front lot and the back lot. And as I mentioned, we looked at combining them, but but the grade change is really tricky. Um and as Chris had mentioned, there's uh ten feet from the existing driveway that we share with um Jay and Lee, our next door neighbors. And uh that is just shared for the back lot, seven B. Uh the parking, uh there's onsite parking and a driveway uh for the front lot, seven A, and so that easement is just for the back two. Um I know that there's a Tesla charger and uh, you know, some of those uh semantics. We also have uh Patricia and uh Lori will let uh our neighbors to the north. It it's uh, there's a lot of detail that needs to happen between where does the Tesla charger go? Uh where does the boiler go for the heated driveway? How do we keep our friends uh to the north happy during construction when they're just uh in Breckenridge in summer? So this really is kind of a preliminary um look at our first shot at uh what we feel like is an appropriate starting point. Um we're not here asking for variances for height, floor area, massing, any of those things. We basically started um again as the architect to to meet the development code. Um which I think in Sarah's presentation, we spent a lot of time with staff. Chris is, Chris is so tired of working with me, he handed me to Sarah. Uh that was a joke. I have a dry sense of humor, but it's been great working with Sarah and and Chris. Thanks for your guidance over the years. Um we we are are sensitive to how special downtown Breckenridge is. Um we love it here. Um we look forward to spending more time here and wanted to start with something that was um respectful with all of, you know, plus one points on on the the development standards. Um we're certainly walking a fine line and I think that's really the goal tonight. Um you know, that there are um some challenges with that ten-foot plate uh access up around the back house, how to keep the house, you know, from looking like two and a half stories instead of one and a half stories. And and that's really, I think, why we're here. Um without sounding defensive or trying to convince you of our position. Um we do feel like the the rear elevation is kind of the front elevation. And I really wholeheartedly agree with Chris and I and I know um Sarah has mentioned a couple of times. Sarah, if you pull up the site plan, um and I know um Elena had mentioned that you'll see the garage, the the house is actually situated behind our lot, our seven A house. Um and so I I respectfully disagree with, you know, the angle that you'll see. It it's really tucked behind the front house. And I uh as mentioned before, feel like the the rear elevation, uh thank you, sir, if you want to kind of pull up the rear elevation there now for us. That was really, um you know, if there was a streetscape. There you go. You know, we we feel like we're designing the house there um from a um, you know, roof massing, uh the amount of glazing um because it's not at street level. And I also agree with the comment that was made that there is a s- a slope that's not really depicted there. But if you want to pull the survey up, there's there's significant grain change as you go up to the walking path um behind our home. as you go up to the walking path, um, behind our home. So the, that front model shot, which, you know, maybe is, I don't want to use the word misleading, but I don't know how helpful those are. That was a, a massing study, and it looks like it's a home on a hill in Iowa with no context of other homes or, you know, a house in front of it. You, you're, you know, those are kind of more architectural renderings for us to sort of study the house and the massing roofs and the bay window, but you, you're, they're, they're a little bit misleading. If we start on the upper left-hand corner, you're, you're really not going to see the home from there because there's, you're not going to see the home like that because of the lot seven A that basically, uh, conceals, uh, that garage entrance. And we do feel like the main entrance for guests would be to come up around where the deck elevation is, and then you would enter on the north side where there's a Dutch door. Um, and then the two lower elevations, I feel like are more, uh, in keeping with the intent of the, um, the design guidelines. Um, but again, understand that we're, we're walking a fine line here. We, because it is a small home, feel like we would like to take advantage of, of some steeper roof pitches. We do feel like the existing pattern of development supports that. There are plenty of ten, twelve, and twelve, twelve pitches uh, in the neighborhood and on the back lots. We feel like the dormers, uh, invite natural light and in- increase the, the interior feeling of those spaces, uh, because again, it's essentially a one-bedroom house. Um, we may, uh, you know, do the, the pull-out sofa thing in the living room, so kind of a one and a half, but it's essentially, it's a small home. Um, there's a question about the drainage. Uh, there is basically a, a pretty extensive mechanical system for groundwater that will run across the back of the property, so, um, there's an opportunity to just have lower ceilings in there to not make the garage deeper. But as Sarah mentioned, we've been working with the Public Works Department to figure out how to collect that groundwater and, uh, manage that from what they've learned at, at one oh six down the street. Um, last comment is, is I think it's important to really think of this house i- as not a street-level, street-facing home. Um, and I think Chris, uh, Chris made that point. Um, I know that there's some questions, and that's the fine line that we're here to, to hear your input tonight so that we can come back with, uh, uh, next, next level of detail with, uh, massing and dormers and roof pitches that, uh, are hopefully, um, acceptable. Um, but also did want to mention that don't, that we don't feel like we're starting with something that's grossly out of scale or grossly inappropriate in any way. So hopefully you agree with that, and we look forward to your input. Thank you very much. Should I stay here for questions?
Fun because we're going to give the Commissioners an opportunity to ask you questions.
Yes, sir.
Hopefully you just stay at the podium. All right?
Um, on the backside, how many feet above the, like, bottom of your French doors do you think the trail is up above?
Yeah, could Sarah pull up the survey? It's on the, the last, very last sheet. I think it's number five. So the, the footplate, so, so the garage you can see is, uh, basically ninety-six, twenty. And then as you come up the stone wall, the, the first floor is at ninety-six, twenty-nine, which is essentially where those, that kind of rock walk goes. Um, so there's sort of a flat pad, and then the dash line that represents the, um, walking trail is that. I don't have my distance glasses on, sorry, guys. Is it thirty-three?
It's thirty-three, so there's about four to five feet of grade elevation change.
Yes.
So the back of the house, is it like ninety-six, twenty-nine you're thinking, or?
So the floor elevation. And then, uh, as Sarah mentioned, that where that, um, walking trail, that Gold Lake walking trail, it looks like it's about five feet higher than the finished floor. And so we have eight-foot plates, um, with, uh, seven-foot doors and windows, um, which is in keeping with the, you know, context of the other historical homes. Um.
Okay, thanks.
You're welcome.
Is that all, Elaine?
That's all.
Susan, do you have any questions for the applicant?
Uh, no, I have no questions.
Ethan, questions for the applicant?
Yes, I have a question on the water issue. Um, you're, you're saying that the back mechanical room will have a mechanical, um, discharge for water. I assume you're meaning a, a sump pump back there, um, to deal with the high groundwater. Where would that discharge go to?
Uh, great question. It's not, hasn't been finalized, and I think we're, all eyes are kind of on one oh six, um, to figure out the, the best system there. Um, what's missing on one oh six, because the foundation is already built, is, um, there, there's no place to collect water onsite without, you know, essentially digging a well.
Mm-hmm.
So we would have the opportunity with this new foundation to essentially collect groundwater, um, and, and actually store it that it can then dissipate back into, back into the ground. Um, so a- almost a, a storage-type system, instead of a conventional sump pump where you have a, you know, a twenty-four-inch-deep pit that's always running and then basically discharging that, um, groundwater to the street. Um, it, we would have the opportunity to basically have kind of a, a collection system.
Mm-hmm.
Um, which, you know, when the, when the ground is frozen and, uh, or in the spring when it's draining, you know, may, may be only so effective, but more effective than a small sump pump that's basically dumping water onto High Street. So sh- short answer is there's some engineering that needs to be finalized, but because it's a new build, we'll take advantage of the history up and down the street. And I know the, well, that's have the same issue, um, and, and essentially, you know, come up with, with the best system to dissipate water onsite to the best of, of our ability through engineering means.
Great, thank you. Um, that's all the questions I have.
So David, you're essentially talking about creating a drywell.
A drywell. Yes.
Um, have you engaged a geotechnical engineer at this point to study some of those issues? Because, um, I think that you have a potential difficult situation there, um, particularly.
I, I do want to just jump in. Engineering is requiring on this project a geotechnical report at the building permit application stage, so that'll be a requirement.
So it's fortunate that the, you own the house in front, so whatever you do that may affect their hydrology, uh, is going to be your problem, but, um, I would encourage you to investigate that, uh, because it's potentially a big issue.
Understood.
The future.
Yes.
I didn't have any other questions. So this is a public hearing, and as such, are there any members of the public who wish to comment? Okay, could you take the podium and identi- identify yourself and, and your address for the record?
Patricia.
Loud.
You're good.
You're good.
Patricia Woollett. Uh, we are one oh eight South High Street, A and B. We've lived in Breckenridge forty years. We've had the back property. This is a duplex. Uh, we've had the back property since nineteen eighty-four, the front property, maybe nineteen ninety-nine. Back in the eighties, we tried to buy this very lot that this house, the proposed house is going up on. And it never, it, it didn't happen, and kind of forgot about that over the years. So for the last maybe twenty years, we spend six months a year now that we don't have to be here all winter long. The kids are grown up, and we spend six months in, uh, Cape Town, South Africa. And we're home here in the summers. We come in late April, early May, and we're here until the snow falls, you know, maybe November. Uh, in November, uh, so the house is used in the wintertime, you know, my family. I I in the summer, our family joins us, and so we're here, you know, everyone is there for the summer. Uh, we live in the back house, and we spend, we keep the doors. We have one door facing southbound, and our living area, outside living area, is all on the south side of the house, which is directly right next door to this proposed house. Uh, we've, just before we came in here, uh, Dave and Aubin met with us, and we, you know, we're, we realize we're going to be neighbors. We're both decent people, and I'm sure we'll be able to make things work. But I, I have personal, uh, you know, questions. I, first of all, the height, I, this is going to affect our gardens, our able, you know, the sunshine that we've had for being able to use this area. I the gables, the, uh, so much glass in an area that we're all looking at each other. Houses are pretty close to each other, and, uh, I'm confident that we'll be able to come up with some plans that take all the, everybody's needs in this very, very tight and overcrowded area, that we'll be able to take everybody's needs into consideration. Um, I'm sure we'll be able to do so, but those are, my husband is eighty-eight, I am eighty-one. We would have to be, uh, we would not be able to be in the back house in, during construction. We would have to find, we'd have to make, I mean, we just couldn't do it. It isn't possible. The few years that we have left are not going to be sent on a, on a construction site with, you know, much as our neighbors are lovely, you know, we want to make everything work, but those are areas that we, in the neighborhood, are, you know, um, have, would want to be considered, want to be considered on this. Uh, I can't think of, you know what you're doing with the codes. We don't. I'm sure that they'll all be met. Uh, but this is a crowded neighborhood, and there, we're hopeful that accommodations can be made out, that all of us can enjoy living here. We've been here forty years. We had no intention, and thank God we can still breathe at this altitude, and we're, you know, that's pretty good. Uh, and we don't, we absolutely would not be able to live, uh, in the construction zone like that. I mean, it just, if there are other alternatives, we're going to have to find them. And the sad, I mean, we all realize that the only, we only have a few months in the summer that people can build. Uh, and we also would like to spend our, some time with our kids and grandkids, which are twelve, you know, that come home and occupy both houses during that period of time. So, um, you know, we, we did have a chance to speak with Dave and Auden, uh, just before coming in here. And, um, we want to be good neighbors, and they do too. So we'll, I'll leave you with that for consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anybody online?
There are no hands raised online. If anybody online wants to also give comments, please raise the hand.
No.
Yeah. Well, I'm going to go ahead and close the public portion of the hearing if that's all the comment that we have. So we'll move on to Commissioner comments and answers to questions on the agenda from the staff. Do you want to bring those up and run us through those? And would you prefer that we answer those, um, individually as we make our comment?
Yeah, actually, I just want to make one point of clarification so, before you, just to distinguish in terms of building height. So as the building heights measure, we have a, a very clear definition of what constitutes one story, two stories, uh, et cetera. So in terms of the actual building height measurement, um, it is, you know, it's, um, less than two stories in terms of how it's measured from grade. So that in terms of meeting the, um, one and a half to two stories, when you're doing a true measurement to the midpoint of the gable, that actually is met by the, um, by the measurement. Where we're asking you the question is on, is, uh, for design standard eighty-six, where that's kind of the perceived bulkiness height, and that's, that, that's just something I wanted to distinguish. That's where you can kind of say, you know, how's this feel in terms of the height? So there's really two different, there's a couple of different height measurement or height design categories within the handbook. And I just wanted to be clear, so like when we're using the terms, you know, for two stories, that's twenty-six feet, you know, measured to, um, the mean, where you can have a, you know, a measurement per our, um, per our standards, it's really easy to say yes, yes or no, and, and that does check.
Bring up the drawing of the front of the house, and you can.
Mm-hmm. Well, I think it's actually, in some ways, it's almost easier to look at the side because it's, it's measured down to existing or proposed grade.
If the grade's like this, you take the middle of the grade, even though the basement's down.
Well, you, you would, you would take what is, was above directly that point. So if there isn't a tall point of the home over that grade, you can't met, it, which is the same for any type of building, whether it's in the, um, the district or, or not, you know, it could be a large building, like at the base of Peak Eight, and working with a slope in your, basically taking from that measurement point of the building and drawing a line straight down to existing or proposed grade is how, is how we measure.
So like on this, and you do that looking at the side view, because you can see the.
Well, I think the side is what's to illustrate the slope, so you can find that midpoint of the gable and draw it down, or you can see like, sometimes a two-dimensional view, you don't realize how much something is set back and where that's down versus where you're saying, like, the front and the driveway, the midpoint of the gable probably isn't located, you know, directly, um, over that, so I might. And I say this with the hope that I'm not making it more confusing, but I just wanted to make that distinction here, because I think it's important, because I think, you know, there, there may be some comments related to height or perceived height, you know, coming.
Chris, are we talking about the midpoint of the gable that we're looking at in the lower right-hand corner there? It has the two windows up there. Are we talking about the gable that comes off the?
Really, really, any of.
Or, what are we talking about?
Any, any one of those. You want, because sometimes the, the, the area of the home, it looks the tallest from out front or back or wherever, isn't measured as the tallest point of the home. So you could, you can measure from a variety of different, we, we, we go through and measure all the points on, um, the gables, but if you're measuring down to the driveway, you know, the, the tall point relative to like a USGS measurement, isn't then be directly over that point on the driveway, is, I guess, what I'm trying to, uh, trying to say.
Because the previous grade was higher than the bottom of the garage door there now, is that what you're saying?
Well, it's, it's set back further, so that's not over that area of the grade, which.
So we're measuring from here, not from here for the primary facade height, is what Chris is saying.
And then where are you measuring to the bottom?
I might, if I may, I may.
Yeah.
And Chris, I think there's string, string lines are called out on David's drawing.
But that's two and a half. Two, right?
Yeah, I can.
Let Chris finish up.
So, yeah, is there a way to get to the side view again?
Sorry, I've always been confused by this. Seems critical to yours.
So like from, like this midpoint of the gable, where they measure. Shows how, or I can draw, but we're then measure down to, you know, wherever it hits the ground there, or from. Oh, okay.
You can just do dots. We can figure it out.
Sorry.
It's all right.
We're gonna go with our swiggly line here. Or, you know, like from, from this point. That's how we're essentially, we're going to do that throughout the home. So like, you know, if you're thinking about what it looks like from the front here, you know, and you go up and there's nothing, no portion of the building in front of it, you're not measuring to that, that point. So with, with the slope, if you're in the front, there, there can be some visual, like perception that it's taller than what it, it measures. And that's, I think, what Design Standard 86 is trying to take into account, is kind of a secondary measure. But in terms of meeting the definition, is it, you know, not exceed 23 feet in the height measured for me? Yeah, yes, it does not exceed, you know, that height. It, it is under two stories as measured by code.
Yep, could have had a request to make a comment pertinent to this, so I'm going to give him a couple of minutes.
Thanks for bearing your point.
Great, thanks. Project architect Dave Frith again. And just because I spend a lot of time on these drawings and I know Chris is great at this as well. But if you zoom in on the very upper left elevation there, to the right of the garage, there are a couple of horizontal lines. And so that's basically the, the grade as it steps back. And so I think that's the only thing I wanted to kind of add to Chris's. And if you, the, the drawing to the right shows what's happening with that grade. And so as it's stepping back, like, do you see where the 13-foot dimension is? That shows that that's a single story right there? That's because that's where the hill is below the roof. And as you move to the left, you can see the grades kind of stepping up the hill. That's not measured from the driveway, which is what Chris was saying. It's measured from the grade below that. So you kind of need to look at the side and the front together. I don't know if that's helpful or not, but essentially that drawing, those two drawings kind of work in concert to show that.
But can I ask a question? So why did you pick the bottom of the 13-foot to be right up there?
Well, so there's, there's a couple of different requirements. And I think that's also what Chris was saying there. You know, according to staff and according to this drawing, we, we meet the height limit, which is the 23 feet to the ridge. So that's one requirement, to the midpoint between the eve and the ridge. So there's a height measurement, but then there's also a single story requirement. And so, so that first dimension, which is the 13 feet, is anything less than 14 feet is a single story. So those are two different guidelines that I'm showing compliance with. And, and that's just, is it a single story or a two-story? And that's demonstrating that that front section is a single story. And then the other dimensions are confirming that it meets the height limit. And I think Chris made a really good point. That there, you know, two-story homes are allowed, which would be 26 feet to the midpoint of the ridge. And then, you know, you could have a 33-foot, from the rear elevation back there, you could have a 33-foot roof. And so because of the way the topography steps down, I don't want to use the word penalized, it's, but it, it, it softens the height limit by following natural grade. Looking back on it, I think the model shots are really kind of a disservice. Because it, it just, it feels like it's just this, you know, house all, all by itself. And it's kind of hard to see the context, but anyway. I don't know if I answered your, I still see some question marks coming out of-
Susan, do you have any questions for?
No.
Yeah, we're done with questions and answers here. So that was a special exception the chair provided. So we need to get to commissioner comments.
Elaine, I'm going to start with you with commissioner comments.
Looks like a great house. I love it. Good work. General comments are lots of glass in the front. Yeah, if you can just try to make it more, more historical looking, I think that would be really appreciated. I'm not convinced that the, on the view from the trail is not that visible. So I'm not sure French doors are really historic in the area. Definitely understand your challenge with the big slope behind. I think the garage will be visible, even though we can argue all day. Yes, anything you could do to make the garage not look like my parents' garage door would be nice. Yeah, nice job, Sarah, and thank you.
Elaine, we have eight questions.
Okay, got to answer them?
Yeah.
Okay, as far as the massive roof massing, I think it fails it. The front view shows a massive roof. Number two, signs says 2091, 92, 93, and 130. Architectural details, I think it's, complies with them. Does the front facade fail priority regarding window glazing? Yes. Do the other facades substantially comply with Priority Design 95 and 96 regarding window glazing? I don't think they comply with the French doors. So I guess that's a no. Sorry, it's a no. Does it fail regarding excessive dormers? Yes. Does the design comply with the height of the primary facade recommended at one to one and a half stories? This I am still confused on. I think the front does fail, so it does not comply. Does the design comply with Design Standard 129 regarding the proposed second level deck? I think it does not comply. I think it needs to have some kind of roof over it and doesn't define a primary entrance. No other comments other than I understand your challenges. Thank you.
Ethan?
Thank you, Chair. I'll just go right to the questions. On number one, does the design fail Priority Design Standard 86? I believe it does. Number two, does the design comply with Standards 91, 92, 93, 130? And I think it does, it does comply. On number three, does the front facade design fail Priority Design Standards 95, 96 regarding the glazing? Yes, it does fail that priority. Number four, do the other facades substantially comply with Priority Designs 95, 96 regarding window glazing? This is a tough one. But due to the site, I am going to go with it does comply. On number five, does the design fail Priority Design Standard 121 on excessive dormers? It does fail that design standard. And number six, does the design comply with Design Standard 122 regarding the height of the primary facade recommended to one and one and a half stories? Yes, it does. Number seven, does the design comply with Design Standard 129 regarding the proposed second level deck? Yes, it does. I have no other comments. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Ethan. Susan?
Thank you, Chair. On question one, I agree that the design fails Priority Design Standard 86 regarding the roof massing. On number two, I agree that it complies with Design Standards 91, 92, 93, and 130 regarding the ornamentation. Number three, the front facade design, I think, fails Standards 95 and 96 regarding the window glazing in the front. But on number four, I think that the other facades do substantially comply with 95 and 96 regarding the window glazing. On number five, I think that the design does fail Priority Design Standard 121 regarding excessive dormers. But I'm kind of hopeful, given Sarah's comment, that if the roof massing is addressed, that maybe this problem is resolved. On number six, I think that the design does comply with Design Standard 122 regarding height. And number seven, I have to admit, I'm a little conflicted on the second level deck. But I will say that it does comply. I have no other comments.
Okay. Question number one, does the design fail Priority Design Standard 86 regarding roof massing and scale of building height? I believe it does fail. Number two, does the design comply with Design Standards 91, 92, 93, and 130 regarding architectural detail? Yes, I think it does comply. Number three, does the front facade fail Priority Design Standards 95 and 96 with regards to window glazing? Yes, I do believe it fails that one. Number four, do the other facades substantially comply with the Priority Design Standards 95 and 96 regarding window glazing? Yes, I do believe the other, the other elevations do comply. Five, does the design fail Priority Design Standard 121 regarding excessive dormers? I struggle with this one a little bit because we didn't really defined, define the question of what is excessive dormers? Are we talking about quantity of dormers? Are we talking about the size of dormers? So I'm kind of at a loss there to definitively answer that question. I think that probably the quantity of dormers is not excessive. The mass of the dormers could be construed as excessive. So I would encourage you to perhaps come back with something that's a little different in your next presentation. Number six, does the design comply with Design Standard 122 regarding the height of the primary facade? I believe it does comply. Number seven, does the design comply with Design Standard 129 regarding the proposed second level deck? I believe that it does comply. And having said that, I think that the entire planning commission would probably be happier if you could make portion of that a covered porch, but that's something for you to contemplate in the future. And I have no other comments.
Okay, I just wanted to mention one thing. I, when I heard Mr. Frith saying earlier that this may be a few years down the road, and you may have discussed with our staff already, but that the duration of the development permit, should you, you know, get this approved, would be three years. And if you didn't begin subs- No, three year, yeah, three years to make substantial improvements to the, isn't that correct?
It's three years for substantial construct. It's like you must have utilities laid and foundation.
Have to have your infrastructure, the infrastructure in and basically all your sewer water, all that, and your foundation in. So if you don't get that point in three years, you would have to pull another permit and you'd be subject to any code changes that occurred before, between that time.
Okay, as this is a preliminary hearing, I think that we are done with the hearing portion of it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate you coming in, appreciate your comments.
Yeah. Challenge construction.
Hey, let me go to the next item, Mark?
Yes.
So, yeah, just as a rehash here, Policy 6R discourages buildings to exceed the recommended heights in the land use guidelines. And in a number of land use districts, that limitation may be only 26 feet, two stories. And we've had several projects recently that received negative points because of that, in particular workforce housing. And as we had a discussion several times now, including with a brief on with the town council a couple of months ago, we are taking a look at an amendment here. It would provide an exception for negative points regarding workforce housing projects, employee housing projects as we define it in our code that meet the criteria of that. So essentially what we have here is outlined in the, in my memo on the first page of that, the existing policy, which provides negative points, starting at going a half-story over the recommended height, and then goes up to a maximum minus 20 points if you're going one and a half to two stories over the recommended height. What we've suggested is putting a new Section B in the code that would say, for all multifamily residential projects where a majority of units are deed restricted for employee housing, negative points will be assigned, assessed as follows. No, zero points would be assessed if it was between zero and one stories over the recommended height in the land use guidelines. And then starting from there, we go to minus five for one and a half stories over and minus 10 for two stories over. So it still provides some disincentive to, for example, if someone was to come in a district that allowed only two stories, for someone to go to three and a half or four, there'd still be some negative points associated with that. But, and, and, and this is all obviously subject to your comments and suggestions as well. So really, at the end of the memo, I've outlined three things I'm looking for commission feedback on. One is that what we said was the majority of units are deed restricted for employee housing. So that's one way of looking at it. It's kind of a generous way of looking at it in terms of it provides an incentive should we have some developer who's doing a private project where they can put a number of market units in. And as long as a majority of their units are, are deed restricted for employee housing, they could be, they could get this waiver essentially from negative points. However, there may be other ways we want to look at it. Maybe we don't think it should be majority, which would be like 51%. The other thing is that maybe instead of units, we want to consider square footage. Because you could come in and put a bunch of small units and then make all your market units the larger ones. So there's some finessing there we need to do, but I'd sure like to hear your input on that. The second issue is just the way we've written the one story over and then assigning negative five and negative 10 for going that second story over, if you agree with that. And then I'm looking for any other comments from you. So I'd be glad to take any questions and then just look for your, you know, informal feedback on this. Once I've got, received that, I'll be taking this probably down the road a month or two to town council for their input. Sure, Susan?
The situation that you described as far as a number, majority of units versus square footage is exactly the concern that I had. I think that if we're trying to give people a break, if they're providing workforce housing, I think the workforce housing should be big enough to accommodate a family or what have you, and, you know, encouraging them to build five hundred square foot units for workforce housing, and then allowing them to have much larger units for the units that they intend to sell at market rate. I don't think it's fair, and I don't think that it is consistent with what our goal is, excuse me, in including, in encouraging workforce housing. So I would go to square footage.
Okay, thank you. And just for clarification, there is a minimum size of three hundred and fifty square feet for any employee. I know that's not, that's not, that's not very big, but I'm just, just to clarify, there is that.
I understand that, but, you know, I think fair is fair.
I think you can have a hybrid. I'm agreeing with what Susan said. I think you could have a hybrid here where you could have a majority of the units, but the units have to have some equity between them. So if the market units are fifteen hundred square feet, then the other units need to be fifteen hundred square feet, and you get to a majority of like units. So you don't get out of balance by doing small units for workforce restricted, deed restricted. And so both quantity and square footage, I think, should be an equation that dictates where this is going.
Okay.
I think we could even simplify it further, just the majority of the square footage for a project. So not just per building, but by overall. So, you know, we're trying to do a mix where we have some that are studios, some of their two bedrooms, some are three bedrooms, but the developers, like the market, they're trying to sell their market rate is a, is a three bedroom. We're just, they're not, the unit count is as important as the totality of the square footage provided. So you might, you might get twenty-five units instead of twelve if they're done, you know, with one bedrooms versus a three bedroom or something like that.
Well, that's why I was going for square footage.
A developer's going to look at the project, be it a big building or be it several buildings, and they're going to look at, at what they're doing needs to have some commonality, and whether they define it as we're going to market rate these, and we're going to rent these in this building or at this level or whatever, is a decision they make at the marketing standpoint. But I agree, all the square footage has to be a majority workforce housing deed restricted.
Because if the goal is to have more workforce housing, and we're basically giving them a free extra floor, and that's the one that they're going to sell for the marketing because that's the best floor, what are we gaining with this?
Well, we've got a very limited supply of land available to us to, for new projects. You know, block eleven's one of the primary remaining sites, another one's
The more reason to make it all workforce housing. Let's give them more floors, so there's more workforce housing. Let's require seventy-five percent or something like that. We're really not gaining anything other than, oh, you're bribing the builder to come in here and build this, but that's just going to bring more cars and more vacation homes or empty homes that are the nicest ones on the building. How does that make the workforce? So I'd like to see something too about encourage garages underneath the buildings if we're going to do this. And I also think that there should be no, like, rental for vacation homes. It should just be primary worker.
You can't, yeah.
Can't do anything like that.
Employee housing doesn't, definition doesn't allow that. So that's
No, for the market houses. Because if they're going to, like, VRBO it out.
Yeah.
But, yeah, I think, I mean, just with our short-term regulations, kind of where you're to build workforce housing, it's just to not be, it's, it's not, it's to be prohibited anyway in terms of short-term rental regulations. But I think where the idea, because we discussed this at the staff level a little bit, was let's say there is a parcel where they could do all, you know, they don't have to do deed restricted by any means, but if they had an extra level, then they could, they could integrate it more, or to have some kind of incentive for adding some deed restricted where otherwise they wouldn't have any incentive to do so. And, and there's probably, there's probably cost factors involved, and that's probably why having all underground parking to get that is, is just not to be realistic. It's already hard enough to, to do deed restricted housing with a big subsidy with just doing the, really the cheapest surface parking.
Yeah. So, I mean, it's, I mean, the town's probably going to do, most of our projects are going to be way over the majority square footage. In fact, most of them are just a hundred percent. But we can expect that to happen with private developer. And so it's what can we live with? And what I've heard is, you know, the majority of the square footage needs to be assigned for deed restricted employee housing, but there needs to be in some incentives, and having that third floor is an incentive because then the developer can attain maybe the, you know, economies of scale they need to make the project pencil. They're stuck with two stories, they've got less units, they can develop that type of thing. So it's, you know, and if we can get private developers to build some more workforce housing for us, that's a huge win for the community.
So can we do an extra floor for them and then do, like, one, you know, like, change the ratio as opposed to just, you know, simple majority, a little bit more, or workforce housing, something like that? I mean, I don't know the economics of this, but I just feel like, if we're really running out of space, we want to put more workers on that as opposed to bring in more.
I think you missed the point here. Point of this whole thing is that we have a limited resource that's not renewable. And, you know, we talk about sustainability, and I have a broader concept of sustainability than the town does. But real estate as a resource is part of our, from my perspective, sustainability challenge. And we, that's not a renewable resource. It's not like trees or anything else. We've only got so much real estate. We need to house people, particularly people that are in the middle category. We built a bunch of apartments down in Alte Verde, and that's accommodating that particular part of the market. But the people who have young families, who may be teachers, they may be potential policemen or firemen, they may be potential electricians, plumbers, all the service people that we need in the community, and their young families don't have any place to go, don't have any place that's affordable. So we need to take the remaining real estate that we have and try to make that an incentive for the development of that type of real estate. And unless we have incentives to do it, it's not going to happen. It's not a matter of giving away the third floor. Now, if you got, if you're going to do a unit, you put in all the infrastructure, the water, the sewer, the electric, everything that goes into it, the streets, and that's a cost. And that cost diminishes as you increase the number of square footage of units that you have.
I totally understand that. That's why I was saying, why, why don't we give another floor then?
Five floors, it diminishes the cost, and that's the point.
You can fit more people in, the more floors you have. So why do we, why do we want to limit it just to three floors?
Well, we're not limiting it to three floors. We're saying they could go higher, they just accrue negative points, and they'll have to offset those in various ways.
And we're looking for feedback, and we want to hear from Ethan too here.
Yeah.
But the, I mean, you know, it's, it hasn't been, we're still worried about community character and all that. So when you go so high, that is still a concern of staff's, and I'm sure some of the commissioners. So it's a balancing act. So we think going one story over makes perfect sense. When we go beyond that, it's probably still worth assigning some negative points, but we're looking for your guys' feedback on that also.
Let's hear from Ethan.
Yeah.
Love to hear your comments.
You did.
All right, thank you, guys. First of all, I'd like to echo what Susan was saying about the square footage. I think that's an important, important point. That said, I also believe that this is an important incentive, and trying to balance between incentivizing people to build too high, i.e. more than three stories, more than two and a half, three stories. It, it, it makes sense to assign those negative points. I see this as just a way, and I think that's how Marcus is presenting it, is a way to incentivize, to get a little bit more without compromising our code and, and, and our ideals on, on, on what we're looking at, really, is, 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 is the point. So I'm in full support of this, and with, with the input about, about the square footage and making sure that we're equitable on between market and, and, and employee housing. I think this is a good compromise, and I appreciate the work you put into it. Thanks.
Thank you.
I guess I didn't say I agree. I like the square footage as opposed to the unit. Also have a concern about, like, ceiling height, that they're going to make it really tall for the, you know, just have lower ceilings for the workforce housing versus, it's just something that, I don't know, that can jimmy in any way they want, right?
Well, I think, you know, since this is really for all multifamily, it could be a town home development or a row home development where, you know, the space isn't just on floors with, with apartments or condominiums. It could be a larger, you know, town home that's allowed to go to three stories for a market rate, and then next to, you know, similar to what we've done on block eleven, there could be another building that really is, you know, has two units in, or three units in like a three flat or that kind of scenario. So it, it, it isn't just limited to kind of your, your multifamily box, if you will. It really, any type of multifamily, and you, and that's how you could kind of leverage it for some market rate where it's desirable, and isn't always the top unit, but it's maybe a bigger unit that also is taller versus, you know, three, three smaller, like, three flats that you would have, you know, next door in a row, row house configuration or something like that.
And Chris, you opened the door to my next series of comments. I think we need to broaden this and say, what do we do when we have a mixed-use project? And a good example of that is, is right there on Park Avenue. The, there's two projects that, that have, well, there's one project that has residential above, I think it was a Breckenridge Land project, above some commercial space. And we have the potential of the redevelopment of the city market property, and we don't know what's going to happen there. But it could be that that developer comes back and wants to do, for example, a commercial building with residential above it. They may want to do a covered parking with residential above it. And I think we need to think about these concepts moving forward because that's the last commercial space, and if we can get some residential in there, I think we should be thinking big picture of how we do that, and that may end up being a higher level. It may be four levels to do that, and that might be a good thing for that space. But again, if you, if you go to three with, without the penalty, and then you have the negative points to go to four, I think that's something that can be negotiated. But we need to think about what happens with mixed use.
Yeah, thank you. That's great, great comment.
A good example of that is, I don't know what's going to happen down with the next project on Airport Road, but suppose somebody came in there and wanted to do a proposal of some units, and they wanted to put a convenience store on one of the lower levels, which would be a real asset for that community to be able to go get milk and eggs without having to go all the way to city market. How would we accommodate that? So I think these are things that we need to think about.
Great. Any other thoughts at this point?
I would like to echo what, what Mark just said. I thought those were all great points, Mark, and, and, and something that I have been contemplating as well.
Well, thank you, Ethan.
Thank you.
Great, okay, that's, that's super great feedback. You'll see more on this, I'm sure. I think you guys in the council are pretty lockstep in if this makes sense, so talk to them, and probably be coming back to you before the end of the year, so.
Let me throw out one more thing before we, you know, while we're in work session. We talked about the issue of where the parking is going to move, and I think it would be a win-win proposition if we could work out doing a several-layer parking facility and putting the solar farm that's right next to Alte Verde on top of that.
Like a carport on top to cover the cars, maybe?
You do, do a garage, perhaps not as big as what we have right here, but put the solar panels on the roof of the parking. And then you can utilize the same real estate that we're using for the same purpose that we're using it.
On the top floor, you can do the panels, like a lot of, putting the panels on that .
And you get to use the real estate underneath what's being used now for the solar farm to utilize parking. And, and the idea of having the day skiers only come into town that far, go on the bus, go skiing, come back and leave, is really a positive thing for the town because it minimizes the traffic, it gets them in and out. So I think it's something that we should really seriously think about.
Yeah, it's a good creative solution. I mean, there may be challenges with the lease on that property, the solar farm has and all that, we'd have to obviously work through.
I'm simplifying it.
But certainly, I, I like the thought process in terms of we, we do need to be creative, so thanks.
Have you guys ever, like, looked at what they do in Europe? Like, they make you park outside of town, and everything's shuttled in, and I don't know. Might be something good to look at. They're making big changes over there to keep all the cars, the visitors, out of town, but people who live in it can drive through. It's tricky because we have the road, the main highway going through town, but.
Thank you. I got a couple other things on, real quickly. First off, I just wanted to mention, so it's, it's obvious, one of our, our new planning commissioner has not been in attendance recently, and there's a reason for that. She's one of the finalists for the town attorney position. And so she has purposely recused herself from coming to the last three or four meetings since she made that decision, put her hat in the ring, because she didn't want to have a conflict down the road where she had weighed in on an issue here at the planning commission, and then she wasn't able to just act independently on it if she does become the town attorney. So anyway, you know, that process is still going through, you know, final review and everything. There may be some information on that coming out in the next week or two, but she was one of the finalists. So that's, that's a reason we haven't seen Keely around. It's not that she didn't like you guys, or that she was shirking her responsibilities, but it, it literally was, that's, that's a situation. Secondly, we are looking at potentially doing a site visit down to the Denver area to look at a couple workforce housing projects that may help inform us as we start taking a look at the runway development on a block eleven, which will be coming to the planning commission probably sometime come, you know, winter, spring. So anyway, we've tentatively slated a date of October seventeenth. I believe it's, it's either Wednesday or Thursday. I think it's a Thursday. And so we'd just be looking if, what kind of availability the planning commission has. We may, we'd like to maybe invite town council members as well so that we can go take a look at a couple of things that have been developed down there and including one by Thrive, who's our current builder of stables. And they are also, at least right now, the contractor for runway, at least in the early stages of the project. So, yeah, check your calendars and we'll, I'll check back with you guys to see if that possibly works for any of you. Encourage many of you as can to make it, but dates are kind of running, running out here this fall, so.
I'll be out of town and I'll be out of town for that particular meeting on that Tuesday.
Okay.
Same here.
Okay, okay. Elaine, you have any?
I'll be here.
Ethan, any chance?
I think that I should probably be here.
Okay.
So that was a Wednesday, the sixteenth?
I think.
Thursday, the seventeenth.
Thursday, seventeen, okay, right.
Hopefully check and make sure we have a call.
Yeah, we will have to. Okay, great. Thank you for that. And then we, there was a town council meeting last week. It was, the main event was looking at their cap, the five-year capital improvement plan. So that's all the projects, a lot of them headed up by public works and engineering. But there was discussion about some projects out at McCain, looking at doing some planning for the fifteen-acre open space tract on the south part of McCain. Looking at how open space can be best kind of developed in conjunction with a floodplain and you've probably seen it overspill its banks in, in one area this, this year. But it was, according to the engineer, it was intended to do that. But anyway, to, to try to, you know, gel all those things in terms of making sure that the uses are appropriate for the floodplain, trails, whatever else we locate in there, trailhead parking, whatever that might be. They're also gonna be taking a look down the road here at extending that rec path, moving the rec path away from the Fairview Roundabout area, which is a dangerous spot right now. Moving it back through, it's already constructed behind Vista Verde one and two. And so the idea is you connect it over further north and then bring it all the way south to Coin Valley Road. So anyway, that's another thing's being looked at. And a, a third is possibly a pond park there. Where the old pond was, it was filled in when they did the development, creating something different. But anyway, that, that's a possibility that's being discussed. There is a, kind of a park site identified there on the north end next to Vista Verde. So those are some of the projects. Breck History came in and they had a series of stabilization projects and then a brand-new project up on, at the mini mine site, if you know where that is, on, in French Gulch. And they're interested in kind of re-erecting portions of that old mine building that has collapsed. And some of the.
Is that the wooden one?
Yeah, the gable ends are still kind of partly standing. And so anyway, they're looking at doing that, but probably building some type of superstructure that they would then attach the pieces to and then they would interpret it. So anyway, it's an interesting project and council agreed it made sense to move forward. So they're gonna continue to work and refine on that. And that's pretty much all I had in terms of the other capital facilities stuff. A lot of it was more the, you know, mundane stuff like road, surface overlays and things like that. But there's a lot of money going out for that, but the council is also being kind of, probably more so than I've seen in a long time, being more judicious about the spending, realizing that the revenues, tax revenues are pretty flat this year. Lodging's down significantly, like eighteen percent for the summer. But sales tax revenue is, is held, but it's, it's not increasing. So knowing that and knowing that our costs as an organization go up every year because of staffing and, and, you know, and increased costs with that and everything else. They're, they're trying to be a little more, like I said, judicious about where they're gonna put their money. So they took a look at not only next year, but the next five years and they pushed some things out further to, so that they're, we're keeping within our means. So anyway, yeah. That's a brief summary on that.
Thank you. So it is seven twenty-five and I adjourned the meeting of September the seventeenth of the Breckenridge Planning Commission.
Thanks, Ethan.
Is that a bear you killed next to you?
No, it's a sheepskin on my couch. See ya.